Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, Freeza did it. When he came back to Earth.
But that's not the same!
After he took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namek!
Well this is new Namek!
So it's completely different!
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.
Shot fired!
Kill the bald one!
Freeza did it!
What say... Say... Say you... What's... Say you... What say you...
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, Freeza did it. When he came back to Earth.
Yes, I'm making uh... Car- I'm making... Pinkus here. Gron.
(Inaudible)
So this one is done. That one, that one, that scene is done.
Say you...
Freeza did it.
Oh wait. Apparently somebody didn't get, doesn't understand. Shadow di- inverted shadow does not want his models sh- Being shared at all. I'm lucky that I was able to get a hold of these. Like...
Freeza did it. Did it. Freeza did it. Freeza did it. Freeza did it. Did it. Did it. Freeza... Did it.
Ex- Hey... What say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, Freeza did it. When he came back to Earth.
But that's not the same!
After he took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namek!
Well this is new Namek!
So it's completely different!
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.
Shots fired!
Kill the bald one!
What say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you? You, you...
Okay, let's see.
Excuse you? You, you... Exc- Excuse you? You?
Robot!
Did it.
Excuse you?
Robot!
Excuse you? Excuse you? Ex- Excuse you?
Robot!
Excuse you? Excuse you? What say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, Freeza did it. When he came back to Earth.
But that's not the same!
After he took over Namek.
(Inaudible)
Excuse you?
The robot!
Ah thing! Thing! Freeza did it. Did it. When he came back... Back to Earth! Back to Earth! Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth! Earth! Back, came, came... Back to Earth! Back to Earth! The robot thing, Freeza did it! When he... Came back... Back to Earth!
You, you, you...
The robot thing, 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 thing! Freeza did it! Did it! When he came... Came back to Earth! Came when he- Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth! Came the, 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 the- The robot thing! Thing! Freeza- Did it! When he came back... Back to Earth! To Earth! Earth, Freeza thing, ah, ah! Thing! Freeza- Did it! When he... Came back to Earth! Earth! Back to Earth, robot, robot, robot! Robot thing, thing! Freeza- Did it! When he, when he came back to Earth! Back to Earth, robot thing! Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth!
But that-
Freeza- Freeza- Freeza did it! When he... When he came back... Back to Earth! When he's a fr- Ah thing! Free- Freeza did it! When he came... Came back to Earth! Earth!
But that's-
To the free- thing! Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth!
But that-
Back to Earth, thing, robot, ah! Ah thing! Freeza did it! Did it! When he ca- Came back to Earth! Ah, ah, thing! Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth!
But that's-
Freeza, ah, ah, ah! Bot thing! Freeza, Freeza, Freeza did it! When he came back-
But that's not- Thing! What say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth!
But that's not the same!
After he took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namek! He just-
Sorry if I'm not talking a lot. I'm just focusing. Okay.
That's- It's not the- Same! It's, that, that, that's not the, the, same! This is not, not, not-
Earth, Earth!
But that's not the same!
After he took over Namek, like you... You are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namek! What say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth!
But that's not the same! But- But that's- It's not the same! But, but that's not the s- Same! That's- That's- Not the- The same! Earth! But that's not the same!
After-
Not the, it's not that- That's not the same! It's not the b- That- It's not the- The s- But that's- That's not- Not the s-
After- Freeza did it.
What say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth!
But that's not the same!
Af- Af, 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 af. After... He took o- Over... Namek... Like... Like you are... Are now.
Wait! Wait! Wait!
After he took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait!
(Inaudible) He took o- Over Namek, like you are now. And t- After he took over Namek, like you are now. Like d- After he took... Over Na- Namek, like... Like you are... Are now. Are now. You are now. Na- to be d- He took over Na- Mek, like you are now. And n- He r- After he... He took over Namek, like... Like you are now.
Wait!
After, after- After he took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait!
Now, he r- Took over Na- Over Namek... Like you... Are now.
Wait!
And-
What? What say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, robot, robot thing! Freeza did it! When he came back-
But that's not the same!
After he took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait!
(Laughter)
After he took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait!
After he took over- He took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait! Wait! He just- Destroyed- Point- Namek.
Well-
Wait! He destroyed Namek!
Well this is new-
Hey! Wait! He just- Destroyed Na- Namek. Namek. Wait, wait!
Like you are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namek! Now s- He destroyed- Point Namek! He- He destroyed Namek! And now- Wait! He destroyed Namek!
Well this-
Destroyed Point Namek!
Well- Well, well- Well this is n-
He- Wait! He destroyed Namek!
Well this is- Well-
Wait! He ju- Destroyed Na- Namek! He ju- Wait, wait, wait! Wait! He destroyed- Point Namek! Wait, wait, wait! He destroyed- Point Namek! He ju- He destroyed- Point Namek! He ju- He destroyed Namek!
Well this-
Just, wait, wait, wait! Wait! He destroyed Namek! Wait, wait, wait! Destroyed- Destroyed Na-
Well- This is-
Wait, wait, wait! Wait! He ju- Destroyed Na- Mek. Wait, wait, wait! Hey! Wait! He destroyed Namek! And now s-
Okay, well. But I think, did, 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 did it.
(Sighs)
What say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth!
But that's not the same!
After took over Namek, and-
What? What say... Say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, Freeza did it! When he came back, came back, came back-
But that's not the same!
After he took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namek!
Well this is new Namek!
So it's completely different!
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.
Shot fired!
Kill the bald one!
Freeza-
What say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
Robot thing, Freeza did it! Did it! Robot thing! Freeza- Did it! When he came back to Earth! Did it! The, the robot thing, Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth!
But that's- That's not the same!
After he took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namek!
Well this is new Namek!
So it's completely different!
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.
Shot fired!
Kill the bald one!
Freeza did it!
Freeza took-
What, what say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
I'm having too much fun with this.
The robot thing, Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth!
But that's-
Flash- Flash I- Flash out looks so bored back there.
Robot thing, Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth!
But that's not the same!
After he took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namek!
Well this is new Namek!
So it's completely different!
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza. As you-
Well this is- New- Namek.
So-
So this, this is new Namek!
So it's completely di- Different!
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.
Shot fired!
Kill the bald one!
Freeza did it!
Emmet.
What say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, Freeza did it!
I really am having too much fun with this.
When he came back to Earth!
But that's not the same!
After he took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namek!
Well this is new Namek!
So it's completely- Different!
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.
Kill the bald one! Poor Pinkus. In one animation I have so- Pain said... Go Freeze, tur- go freeze on her and blow her up. And this... She's antagonizing... Freeza's brother.
Say you?
Kind of-
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, Freeza did it! When he came back to Earth!
But that's not the same!
After he took over Namek, like you are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namek!
Well this is new Namek!
So it's completely different!
(Laughs)
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.
(Inaudible) Shots fired!
So it's com- Completely- E- Different! So it's completely different!
Yeah, about as different as-
So it's- Completely different! So it's- So it's comple- E-ly different! So it's completely different! So it's- Completely di- Different! So it's comple- E-ly di- Different!
Yeah, about as-
So it's- So it's- It's completely- E-ly different! So it's- So it's- It's completely- E-ly different! It's completely different! It's completely- It's completely- E-ly dif- It's completely different! It's completely, completely different!
Yep. Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza. About-
Well this is new Namek!
So it's completely different! Wait, wait, wait! Wait! He destroyed- He destroyed Namic!
Well this is new Namic.
So it's completely different!
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.
Ah, I love Derby. Even if she is a cr- even- Even if she is a- Possessed by a cyborg and- She'll always be my favorite character.
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing! Freeza did it. When he came back to Earth.
After he took over Namic, like you are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namic!
Well this is new Namic.
So it's completely different!
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.
Kill the bald one. So-
This is new- New Namic. Well this is new Namic.
So it's completely different!
Yeah- About as d- Different- As you- You are from- From Free- Freeza. Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza. About as diff- Different as you- Are from- Freeza. For n- yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza. Freeza- Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza. Yeah, but- About as different as you are from Freeza. Freeza- about as different as you are from Freeza. About as di- Different as you are- You are from- Freeza. Different as you-
What say you?
Okay, so that is what I've get done so far. I'm almost done.
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing! Freeza did it. When he came back to Earth.
After he took over Namic, like you are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namic!
Well this is new Namic.
So it's completely different!
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.
Kill the bald one.
About as did-
What say you?
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing, thing, thing! Freeza did it. When he came back-
After he took over Namic, like you are now.
Wait! He destroyed Namic!
Well this is new Namic.
So it's completely different!
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.
Kill the bald one.
One more ti- What- We'll run through this one more time and then- Um, I'll be ready to post.
Freeza did it.
Excuse you?
The robot thing! Freeza did it. When he came back to Earth.
After he took over Namic, like you are now.
Wait, wait! He destroyed Namic!
Well this is new Namic.
So it's completely different!
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.
Kill the bald one.
Oh sh-
Yeah, about as different as you are from Freeza.